The Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting Thursday, June 13th, 2024. If we could begin by standing, paying respects to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and in every justice.
Thank you. Item number three, noting of the role.
Noted here. Forum, Mr. Berger and Mr. Spiz are excused, and everybody can pull their mics down so that the TV comes up.
Thank you. Number four, approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve tonight's agenda dated July 13, 2024.
I'll second.
June 13.
Thank you. June 13, 2024.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number five, conflicts of interest, ex parte contact. Anything for this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to number six, approval of the minutes. Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 5:23, 24.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 5:23, 24.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to number eight, Commissioners' comments. Does anybody have anything they would like to bring up or discuss this evening? None? All right. Moving on to number nine, public hearing. Zoning ordinance, text amendments to Article 2 with a definition of correlated color, temperature, and Section 10.2 to allow LED exterior lighting, regulate correlated color/temperature, required method for controlling or adjusting lighting, prohibit excessive lighting, and exempt allowed sign lighting.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing at 7:02.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will open the public hearing at 7:02.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mateo Paslakwa, Carlisle Wharton Associates Township Planning Consultants.
Can you turn on the microphone?
I know, I don't even hear it going.
I can't hear any of that.
Test. Okay, there we go. Is that better now? Is that better? Okay. Yeah, so for the public hearing, the ORC has been working on some amendments to the zoning ordinance language as it relates to defining and having the light requirements in the zoning ordinance itself. Some of the items in which the ORC was working to kind of better define and deal with relate to the definition of, you know, different color of lighting and the Kelvins, basically the warmth of the light that it gives off. To include LED lighting in the types of lighting that is permitted, you know, within either it be building lighting or site lighting, things of that nature. To restrict the pole-mounted and building lighting to a 3,500 Kelvin, so if you're familiar with the Kelvin scale, the higher the number is, the warmer the light, the lower the number is, the brighter the, or is it the other? It's the higher it goes, it's the brighter of a white it can be, and the lower it goes is a warmer. And 3,500, usually between 3,000 and 4,000 is kind of an industry standard. So the 3,500 is, it's a fair regulation as it relates to site lighting and kind of the color that it gives off. Also, a requirement to have developers or, you know, people proposing projects or applicants explain, you know, if there's going to be extensive site lighting, how can that lighting be reduced or dimmed during non-operational hours predominantly in the evening? But this is again just to kind of prevent lights being, or lots being lit up at all hours of the evening for potentially no apparent reason. Basically, the restriction of using lighting as a method of getting attention for businesses is ironically enough, we've actually had some businesses inquire about different ways in which they might be able to light their property in a manner that would draw more attention to them. We have some language in the ordinance right now, but it's a little loose. This is a lot better as it relates to kind of prohibiting that from happening. And then also allowing, giving the zoning administrator or the building official the ability to exempt these rules from the new sign regulations for like electronic messaging signs. So if there's something related to the lighting and that signage that would violate these rules, there is some wiggle room at townshipal to work with them if there's a compelling reason for that. So I believe, I know Megan's been the one that's been working on this, but that's kind of the summation of the language. The language was provided in redlined form as far as what we're, what they're proposing to change. So if there's any questions, again, I know Megan has worked more closely with the ORC on this one. I will do my best to answer them, but I have looked through the red lines and I feel as though it's self-explanatory, but I wouldn't make that assumption.
The first thing in a public hearing is the presentation by the petitioner. In this case, the township is the petitioner, so Mateo is doing the presentation. Then the public hearing is opened, and you only hear from the public. Close the public hearing. Then it comes to comments. If Mateo had more, and then review of correspondence, and your discussion.
And do they vote out, they vote outside of the public hearing, correct? Okay, because I will require a vote approving this to go to the township board for review and readings.
So before the commission discusses, here is a number of members of the public board who have the opportunity to speak. If she has no, nothing that, she has nothing that she wants to say, then the public hearing is closed and you go on.
Fair. Yeah, I'm good if there's someone from the public.
Are you wanting to speak to the commission today?
We close the public hearing at 7:07.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I need a point of explanation. From here, we, can you help me out again soon, please?
So from here would be, the public hearing in this case is the same as if there was an applicant, an outside applicant. So after the public hearing is closed, then we would hear from the township consultant and/or staff if Tim London were here and had something to add. Then there would be a review of correspondence if we had any. And then you discuss.
And then we're good?
And then a motion.
And then a motion.
The motion would be to forward this on to the, recommend to the township.
To recommend either approval or denial to township board.
And they have one reading or two?
They would have two.
Okay. Sometimes we forget these older folks here.
So I kind of, I mean, I jumped the gun with my explanation, but I wouldn't have anything further to add. I'm sorry, John.
I don't know about you. Okay, so then we can discuss this, ask any questions? Any more you want to add?
Nope.
I just, Mr. Chair, if the ORC went through this three times, I believe, and we were pretty confident about what the outcome was. The attorney had a chance to look at it, so the red line here is pretty self-explanatory. What we're doing, particularly the front job of outlining the three or four things that we were most interested in from the ORC level.
Yeah, this is something we spent quite a bit of time on, actually.
And that's three out of the five.
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah.
No, I'm familiar with, we have some more late where I work in the dims at night. When there's motion, the light for candle comes up. I'm familiar with this. I think it's a good thing to have.
Well, if there's no questions, no discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this to move on to the board for their consideration.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries.
Okay. Next part for the evening for what we have you guys is master plan updates, kind of master plan light tonight. Master plan light, diet master plan, just a few things to do. We are continuing to work on the future land use map, you know, kind of per our last meeting, which was very productive. Some more information's kind of been collected since then, so that one's still in process, but we at least wanted to get kind of two of the, two of the easier ones in front of you this evening, one being vision goals and objectives and the other design guidelines. You were provided redlined copies. These edits were based on the conversation from the last meeting. So if there's any questions, comments, concerns, we'll start with vision goals and objectives I know, I believe, Mr. Ballard, you were, you were not present at the last meeting? Okay, all right. And Mr. Willowsack, you were not present as well, correct? Okay, all right. I mean, if there's any questions that relate to, I'm happy to answer them if there's any concerns. If the edits look good, we're good to go and finalize and move on, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Mr. Chair, a question if you don't mind.
Sure.
Vision goals and objectives, that's the area you want to talk about right now?
Yeah.
But the, so under goals, the, the objectives under community character, there was some wording in the previous master plan. I guess I'm trying to determine how this differs, this update or this rewrite of the master plan, how this is different than the 2019.
So if the, if...
I know it's a very, very, it's a very quick question.
I mean, the, yeah, no, the foundation of your vision goals and objectives comes out of your 2019 plan. I mean, we didn't, we did not rewrite a full set of vision goals and objectives. It wasn't necessarily part of the scope of what we were brought on to do. So I would say that the text that is not redlined for, by far and away, is based off of your 2019 plan and has not been modified. I know this is not the first time we've seen vision goals and objectives. We kind of worked on them when we did the big boards, so this is reflective of those edits. It's reflective of the comments from the last meeting. So I would say that they're substantially from 2019, but they are not word for word from 2019.
Okay. One of the things I was reflecting on was the, there was some language in the 2019 about, it was, I think, comments from the community from when their surveys were done back then that were added about buffer zones, keeping those buffer zones that were already in existing zoning ordinances. They're doing language, and I'm wondering if that kind of language is being carried forward. It was an objective. I could probably find the page in 2019 if I thumb through it. It'll just take me a little while. I'm just wondering if that kind of language is being carried forward.
I'm just looking at the language now. I mean, I don't, I don't remember conversations about buffers necessarily in the vision goals and objectives as far as being edited or modified. I know in the design guidelines, which we'll get to next, we've outlined some of that language. Well, yeah, I mean, there's different ways in which these sections can influence the decisions that the township decides to make or the community makes when they're confronted with, you know, developments to consider, zoning rewrites to consider, so on and so forth.
Are we talking about existing buffers, maintaining the existing buffers? Or are we talking about the adding or maintaining the language that's buffers in developments?
No, I'm talking about continuing what was already in there.
I guess my question would be, why would we take a buffer out? Buffer's in, why would we take it out?
No, I'm just, I'm supporting you saying the way it was. That's all. I'm just looking for that.
I see. The language in the master plan, you're talking about the PUD language?
Right, right.
Okay. We'll get an application.
Right. I just want to see that that's carried forward, and I just don't know if in this rewrite, if it was being a completely rewritten document and removing some of that language, or if it was maybe just not part of what we've gotten to yet.
Updates are tough. A rewrite is, it's all new. A, we're not, you know, we're good with what we've got, let's use it for another five years? That's easy. The updates are tough because it's, it's kind of, it's a give and take between we're going to keep a little bit of this and a little bit of that.
I think that we can take down suggestions.
No, 100%.
And see if it's, you know, what it was in the 19, and then investigate what it is in the proposed, and see if we have a match. If we don't, then adjust accordingly.
I would agree. I would just say that if you can, if you can reach out to me with, if there was a specific part of VGO that you were referring to, it doesn't have to be now, but if you can email it to me so that, so that I have that for, yeah.
One of our last meetings when we were voting on something.
Well, I think that was design guidelines. You wanted kind of an increased buffer consideration for some of the commercial and industrial design guidelines that we were establishing, if they were abutting residential, I believe, which we did.
No, this was residential, line, you know, distance. It was language in the master plan that basically said, let's continue to enforce zoning, existing zoning ordinances. It supported my stance on the vote that night, both the master plan and the PUD language that we had married together, and that was my, the basis for my vote that night.
Yeah, that's fine. I would say send me, send me what you've got, and even if, even if you don't have it word for word, I will, I will comb through VGO, and if, if the buffer language needs to be adjusted, we can adjust it. If it's not there, for whatever reason, we can get it back in.
I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke in saying the buffer language specifically. It was more reference to adhering and continuing to support the existing zoning ordinances. Truly what the vote was. I'll find it. The second one that I had was related to the traffic, and maybe we'll get to that as we go through this further. Should I pause my comment for that?
You talk about the transportation, the transportation section?
Yeah.
Four?
I apologize for skipping over things. Do you'd like to go back?
Let's go through it kind of in order if there's, if there's no other questions until that part.
I mean, for, so for us, we'll go through, we'll take a look at each, each red line and go from there.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, John.
Where do you start from?
Let's go to page one. It's always a great place to start.
I'll find that.
So for vision, based on some feedback from the last meeting, the vision statement now says, "Oxford Township is a place of natural beauty and economic prosperity. The township will preserve these assets in a manner that provides balance between the growing community, infrastructure capacities, and the natural environment." Any questions or comments or concerns? Okay, if we go to page two, so this is under community character, objective six. Objective six now reads, "Manage the extension of public sewer and water services within the limits of the water sewer master plan and urban service boundaries." And that was, that was akin to just making sure that we reference other plans that are being developed kind of concurrently with this as a basis point for, again, kind of some decisions around infrastructure. All right. So transportation, page four. Objective two reads, "Promote orderly, efficient access to developing land and improving circulation throughout the township and the region through the extension, paving, and maintenance of roadways." We deleted including the research and resource allocation to developing north-south routes alternate to M24, only because there's new objectives at the end that we feel address that better. So to that point, objective five reads, "Work with the Road Commission of Oakland County to identify transportation improvements and potential funding partnerships for implementation." Objective six reads, "Research the improvement of traffic flow as well as alternative motorized north-south routes and east-west connectors throughout the community." So that was the objective that we felt better encompassed the entire community than just focused on M24.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is a section, so under transportation, and I'm looking at the master plan from 2019. The master plan from 2019, it calls out Thomas Road Extension, Hummer Lake Road Extension, North Oxford Road Connector, a few others. I'll go through all of them if you're familiar. Is this new, updated, or I shouldn't say updated, rewritten master plan, does it have specific language or will it in other areas like the 19 did?
Yeah, so the transportation section of the master plan will, will still reference some of those older areas, but then we also got feedback that we need to start thinking about other areas and other corridor areas as well.
There's a carryover from the previous, previous master plan. And I think that when you talk about research and improve and work with the Road Commission, in our objective five and six, we can scrub on those and not necessarily carry those forward because I don't think anything's going to happen.
Yeah, I believe, I know there was conversation about it.
Not all of them, but some of them.
Yeah, and I think it was more is more, adding, you know, we can, you could keep what's there. Granted, they have been carryovers that not much has been done with, but they're there in case you need to, but their focus, there's a lot of focus on the northern half within those corridors, and the conversation need to work towards Drainer, need to work towards M24, so that'll be added in that section, and we will have that draft available for you in coming meetings.
Okay. Okay.
We have seen it in our, we're coming up in four years, but in the last four years, there's some emphasis on the northern part. Some good emphasis on developing and supporting that. All of a sudden, it's all at Drainer and M24.
Yeah.
Everything is at Drainer and M24.
Yeah.
That was my question, even the definition where you talk about these different roads. Have we really looked and studied Drainer Road south on the west side of 24?
Drainer Road, west side of 24, south? Like the area south, like that area of the township?
Drainer Road carries a tremendous amount of traffic to 24.
Correct.
And as I think about this, if you were to finish paving Drainer Road to the west to Baldwin.
Okay.
That gives you another outlet on Baldwin. Then there's Coats Road and Newman Road that goes south. If any of those were improved, they would take you into Orient Township and basically Indian Road.
Correct.
I think that will all work with objective number six, to search the improvement of traffic flow as well as alternate motorized north-south routes and east-west connectors throughout the community. I appreciate...
In today's master plan, there are roads that are specifically called out.
And that's what I was going to address. They've been called out for many master plans. I think we need to really scrub on those to see if we want to carry that forward or not. I've talked about that all through the master plan, even the steering committee, about those roads, Hummer Lake and some of the roads, I don't remember them all, but they're all listed, and they've been listed since, I think, 2011 in our master plans. I don't know if we need to continue to carry those on. I like the idea of objective six to research the improvements because so much has changed. The needs of the community have changed since 2011.
Well, that's why I bring these other roads up, because it doesn't appear that there's been any discussion or appearance of those.
Yeah, Drainer, Drainer Road by name is going to make it into the transportation section. There's no way, and it, it's pretty much coast to coast, because I believe that you're right, because I think that there, there is potential for Baldwin to alleviate some of what's happening on 24. You've just got to get to it, you know what I mean? So I think that...
And it's not attractive to get to it today.
Right.
From Coats on because it's gravel, it's curvy.
All right, trust me, I've come up during traffic and gone every which way, and yeah, I mean, I've been guilty of the 50 miles an hour, and then it's gravel and...
Eight o'clock in the morning at the intersection of 24 and Drainer.
Yeah.
And watch the flow that comes out of Drainer on 24.
Yeah.
It is really heavy.
Or cuts through Red Barn, so.
Well, yeah.
So I think then from, I mean, I think we're going to capture all that in the transportation section.
What might that be? I live on East Drainer. Probably don't need to say too much more.
No.
I've been here 40-plus years, and what I've seen is terrible, what they have done to the land.
Yeah.
And what the traffic is going to be, I think I'll need a reservation to get out of, I'm about a mile down from 24. I've already started going around the back one because I can't deal with what's, what's going on down there.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think the reality really needs to be proven to anyone in the community about Drainer, and like I said, it, it's going to have its share in the master plan, which then will, and again, the funding, that's kind of why objective five is there, because we can do all the studies we want and have all the cool poster boards we want, but got to figure out a way to pay for it too, so.
And while it talks about the county road commission, should we say other townships as well?
I think you could add in other agencies in that.
You might want to do that because it's impact.
I, it's where I, yeah, it's kind of where I thought, but yeah, let's, let's go with other agencies.
But I like the idea of, you know, Drainer Road, but leaving it north, south, east, you know, rather than naming specific, because Plan A doesn't work out, I don't want Plan B not being an option because it wasn't part of the master plan.
Sure.
I like just leaving north-south routes, east-west connectors.
Perfect.
And we can adjust as needed.
Great. Those are the red lines. Any other comments, questions, vision goals, objectives? No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, design guidelines. These, this, these ones were not as intensive of updates, but nevertheless important. I know that Commissioner Spiz had mentioned wanting to see a range in the reference in the opening paragraph, because we were just citing kind of an average daily trip number. This is the range of kind of the lowest in the northern part of LaPierre Road, and then the highest in the southern part of LaPierre Road. I'll just make sure everyone's got it in front of them, design guidelines.
I figured that out.
So any, any concerns with the, the range language? Okay.
Are those good numbers?
They're as recent as SEMCOG has, which I want to say is 22.
That's fine.
So then on the next page, the only thing here that we wanted to highlight, at least on this page, and it's highlighted in all of them, is we've provided images and some sample renderings. Those will actually be populated with custom content. Those drawings are actually sourced out of a, out of Ohio zoning ordinance. I just appreciate the way they were put together, but when we get to the portion where we finalize this, we'll actually generate some custom images for that.
The township or from, you say custom?
I'm sorry, so I guess custom renderings is the better way to go, the layouts at the bottom. The imaging we, you know, we can work with. I'm just, I want to try to put a picture to the overall intent of what we're looking to do with real-life examples, more or less local.
Rub it in.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So the second page of that design guideline that shows the two buildings at the bottom are kind of in the middle picture.
Yeah.
Do you think, you know, from experience, having an ability for someone to say, driving down 24, pull off quickly, run in, grab a coffee, or pick up something from a retail establishment, whatever it might be, and then continue on, is, should we have an option like that for customers? Because I see a lot of the parking is either on the side or it'd be in the back. Is that something to consider?
I think it is for two reasons. This district is Drainer to Minnetonka, which is the village border. Your lots along Drainer are very old and antiquated through that district. I know that the speed limit, it starts to taper off, but I think you're still at 45 or 40.
You talking M24 or Drainer?
M24, from, from Drainer to Minnetonka. So the lots are, the lots are really set up to where you, you could not have a traditional setback retail center. I mean, take that back. Yeah, it would be difficult to do it, and because of the proximity to the village, if you're, if you're, if you're looking to kind of build off a little bit of what they have as it relates to a more traditional downtown feel... if you're looking to kind of build off a little bit of what they have as it relates to a more traditional downtown feel, um, that is the area in which that's gonna happen, per the restriction of those lots and the proximity to the village. The design guidelines that are designed for north of that are much more like traditional suburban and industrial in nature.
Yeah, my, I did, my thoughts were more about what's, where do I stop when I go to pick something up along the way? And a lot of times, because 24 is so busy, I just want to get through it. I'm just trying to get, but to allow, if there's a store there that I can pull off easily, quickly, park safely, get out, do business and leave, that might be good for business in those areas, that's all.
Sure.
I saw, one of the, one of the images kind of shows some parking options beside. And it's not that I'm trying to create a downtown feel, it's more about the convenience and the, the opportunity to use that establishment.
That's the entire M24 corridor that we just redid two, three years ago. I don't think you're gonna get them to have to come in, cut the curbs out, put the pull-offs and parking options there.
This is further south of downtown.
Yeah, south of the village, down to Drainer.
Down to Drainer Road.
You're saying you can't see them permitting more curb cuts for developments like this?
I, I don't.
I mean, this, this, this is redevelopment, because you're built through that corridor. So this is more or less kind of laying out the thought process that eventually this is kind of what, the type of development we would like to see in these areas, because right now you, you do have a million curb cuts on it because the, the lots are small and narrow and they service this 5,000 square foot office building and it serves this car wash and then it serves this, so on and so forth. Really what would be, what would be preferable with, with guiding people in this direction or developers in this direction is to take some of those lots, combine them, and make them into a more uniform type of development, where I would see probably the parking along the side is the more likely scenario than necessarily around the back. And that would give you kind of some buffer between the buildings. It would give, I think, the ability for traffic maneuvering a little bit easier. I, I don't necessarily foresee just an endless row of streetfront stores with all the parking in the back. I don't think that's where you get to, but maybe a little bit closer to the village, that's possible. But I think as you work your way south, you're more likely to see the parking to the south. But I'd say the goal here is to maybe see if there isn't some encouragement in consolidating some of those lots um, to try to get developments of this style. Now that's, that's what we're putting in front of you. If that's not, if this isn't kind of the direction you see that corridor going in or not, when you think that it should, it, this doesn't have to exist, although we're definitely at the point of making that decision.
I think it's a good desire to have, if the opportunity presented itself. But you have to have the opportunity to present yourself.
I agree.
It doesn't hurt putting it in for guidelines, if that's what they're for.
I agree. Thank you, John, for clarifying.
Building developments like where Culvers, Tractor Supply, and Leo's Building is, there's a secondary road there that allows you to pull in one of the entrances and then you can go any one of those three.
Correct.
Without being in a trap, heavy traffic lane. And I think that concept where you've got new ground or new land, like the area north of, of Ray Road would be ideal to do for the future. And I don't see that concept outlined here at all.
Not there, but if you turn the page, it's the next one. So the next kind of design guideline area is from the village north to Dunlap. Um, it also encompasses actually Drainer Road to Indian Lake. So it's, it's kind of broken up between the two areas, but it's Drainer Road south of Indian Lake along 24 because you do have more traditional retail development there.
I apologize, I see the red line now that's been answered.
No, you're fine. No, no, I remember it from the last meeting. And so to those areas, again, kind of the village up to Ray and then Drainer down to Indian Lake is kind of this more traditional retail suburban type of setup or commercial setup. So what we added to those was the, so and this might speak to your comments, Don, about buffering. Increased landscape buffer requirements where developments about residential uses and then incorporate the use of service drives and deceleration lanes. So that's kind of what we took from the last meeting as far as this district was concerned.
If I can add to that.
Sure.
Just as I was reading that, I was thinking about, been looking at the plan view or the bird's eye view, the image on the bottom left there, and thinking about, this is residential behind here that, you know, sometimes deliveries take place at early in the morning and behind these facilities. These facilities that help to have some language, maybe to protect the neighbors from, let's say, either a privacy wall, a six-foot, whatever that might be, help with noise if there's residential supplying that, not only the landscape buffering, but some sort of majority requirements I'm just not aware of.
I, I think-
Wouldn't that be more ordinance related than master plan?
You, yeah, yes.
We've got pretty involved with fencing.
Walls, yeah.
And things to a site plan, so I think that that can be-
Okay, I'm just trying to look out for our neighbors, you know. I want to see that a lot of people don't like a big box door potentially and we start unloading at 5:00 in the morning and 6:00 in the morning next to them. That'll make it even worse, so we try to have as much language protected as possible.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I think, I mean, I, I think if you wanted to open up the door to kind of, you could just, you could get rid of landscape and say buffers and just leave it open to like there's numerous options available to kind of make sure that whatever it is, it, it buffers these developments when they're, when they are but residential. I mean, privacy walls, stone walls, that, those are, those are considered landscaping as well. I know I always think about like plants, you know, a bunch of pine trees with landscape buffers, but you know, the rock walls, things of that nature are also considered landscaping. So I, I think you're protected here, but I'm, I'm happy for edits, whichever way you-
Just some input, that's all I-
No, I got you.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay.
With that-
I was just trying to think in my mind, whether we're gonna put something out there, like the Ray Road right now. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, if there's, if there are any other questions or concerns about this district, we can move on to the next.
Right.
All right. And so last but not least is the, the Highway District or Highway View District. So this would be M24 Dunlap up to Thomas. And so this is kind of again more oriented to some of the industrial uses that we've discussed, but just kind of making sure that they still, you know, interact and comply and become a part of the community without necessarily being a nuisance to either design, abutting residential areas, traffic, so on and so forth. Uh, so this is another one where we did the incorporation of service drives and deceleration lanes. Uh, and this is one where we did the increasing of the landscaping buffers, uh, abutting residential uses.
The only comment I have-
No, go ahead.
You had the red line under design objects over M24 Highway View District. Work with the RC, ORC and the NDOT, ensure site design laws, limited access to 24. I think that's very, very key, because they, they're heavy hitters in regards to how that's going to turn out and how we're gonna use the deceleration lanes and those, those things to complement service drive, to complement the developments. They go very much hand in hand with that.
Agreed.
I have a question, just go with a question, comment. Um, so the fifth bullet point talks about established multifamily and dense housing options. And it goes on at the end of that sentence, it says, um, about the need for middle, for missing middle housing. I, I heard us talk about that. I'm at the fifth-
It's not redlined. It's under design objective as the fifth bullet point.
Yeah, me sure, John.
I got it.
Okay, got it. So I just, I wanted just to ask, missile, missing middle housing. How do we understand what that is? I, I, I kind, I got an idea.
I think it's, I, really more or less to encompass workforce housing, but that's not a statement of like, to support minimum wage workers, it's, it's of all types. So these developments will employ a range of multiple different incomes. And so the thought process just being again, that if we, if we have some level of workforce affordable housing, that is the wrong way, it, it's not affordable housing by the definition of what the government or what we think it is. It's more from the perspective of you have people who are going to be on these sites who are going to have an annual income of 40K, there'll be people who have 80K, and there'll be a few that have 150K. This is really more or less to just establish that you need housing to support these things from the perspective of, you know, if you don't have a lot of transportations outside of a vehicle and if you don't have enough of that kind of workforce housing, then that commute becomes a burden and hiring becomes a burden. I mean, we see, you know, there's not a lot of signs out saying now hiring, starting at 150K, but there's more than enough out saying now hiring, starting at 30K.
But if you reverse that and say, the industrial north of town is hiring, they're gonna have to attract, our supervisor's talked many times about this, about attracting the workforce. They're not gonna be able to afford to live in the community here. So you do need to mention this missing middle housing.
Yes.
Because it's, the jobs that they're creating out there with barren cash right now, I don't think that they're going to be able to support the average home in the area.
Right.
You don't have any two, $300,000 houses going up.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, there's not, there's, there's, there's still a challenging argument made for rent, but there is still even in that, in that economic workforce section of, yes, rent might only be a couple hundred bucks a month less than what it is for a mortgage, but homeownership is different than renting. You know, you've got a $3,000 mortgage and your furnace goes, you better come up with eight grand. You know, you're renting for $2,000 a month and your furnace goes, you call the landlord. I'm not saying he fixes it tomorrow, but it, there's just, there's still a benefit to that certain level of to have that kind of multifamily product in proximity to these employment centers. That's not me. That's not me. I just stepped away. Yeah, let me adjust it. So. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
No, I, the comment comes from, you know, our discussions about if there's gonna be a higher density development near the M24 corridor downtown, that seems to make sense, right? And I think our master plan, even 2019 supports that direction. Do you, do you agree with that?
I mean, yes, I'd have to, I'd, I'd have to go back and refer to it more strongly to confirm.
Further away if we get, we get away from downtown, they'll say the less density start to, the lot, lot size for household increases.
Sure.
Okay, I'm just trying to, you know, frame that and kind of keep that in place.
Yeah.
I'm afraid to have the language that increases density further away when the feedback we seem to get is that we want less density. So I, I guess a very difficult balance between density and cost of homeownership or renting and what that might look like.
Yeah, I mean, you're, I, I understand what you're saying, right? We're all walking that fine line between the preservation goals and the development goals. I think what, what you would, what I would envision out of something like this, should it ever come to fruition, that the northern portion of LaPierre Road develops into an employment center of predominantly industrial or R and D centers, is that within a close proximity of those, you would have a dense housing, um, option or product. But it, but it's not going to go that far off of M24, predominantly because of infrastructure. Um, there is, there's just, there is a certain amount of infrastructure you have to have to have that kind of housing and it's not there yet. Over time, it may make its way there, but even if it gets there, I don't think that it travels that far east-west off of M24.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I've got my marching orders for master plan, so I appreciate it. Uh, okay, new business. You want me just into new business?
Sure.
Okay. So new business, uh, tonight, you have in front of you a, a draft ordinance that the ORC's been working on as it relates to renewable energy ordinances, um, in the community. That ordinance is influenced by the passing of Public Act 233, which happened last year in November, which is basically the state's mandate for communities to either develop renewable energy ordinances or let the state oversee, review and approve those projects regardless of where they are within the state. Um, so I know that the ORC's worked on this. I've, I've actually, for the company, done a lot of work on this. I know Megan had a presentation that was put together and you got the language in front of you. Um, you know, more or less the gist of it is, is that the way the law is set up is there are certain, there's been laws that have been put in place over the last couple of years that have basically pushed the utility companies towards hitting certain renewable energy benchmarks. Those laws have been passed. They need to generate, you know, 70% of their power needs to be renewable by 2030. I'm not, this is not verbatim, but I'm giving examples. Now it's coming to the point where in order to generate that kind of energy, the utilities now need land because, you know, 150 megawatt solar field needs 600 acres. 150 megawatt coal plant needs 10. So now the utility companies are coming back and saying, if we're gonna meet these thresholds, we need to start freeing up land to do this. So this was the state's way of basically telling townships, cities, other municipalities that you need to come up with ordinances that allow for these types of developments. The law only references certain nameplate systems. So it's 50 megawatt solar systems, it's 100 megawatt wind systems, and it is battery systems that have the capability of storing 50 to 200 megawatts. 50 megawatts of solar, 600 acres. 100 megawatts of wind is 600 to 700 acres. Again, topography, wetlands, all that plays a role in this. Um, so we're talking about, you know, net acreage, not gross. Um, battery is kind of the anomaly. You can, you can get 50 to 200 megawatts of storage out of a five-acre battery site. Um, so with all that being said, we're kind of working with our clients to develop an ordinance or renewable energy ordinances that are compliant with the state's rules. And so when the state passed these rules for these big systems, they, they told you what your setbacks are gonna be. They told you what your height limits are gonna be. They told you what your noise limits are gonna be for the large systems. So really, in order to have a compatible renewable energy ordinance, you just need to copy paste what the state told you to do. Um, where it's been a little challenging is the state really didn't talk to zoning. They didn't talk to landscape buffers. They didn't talk to all these additional requirements or studies that whether townships or cities or villages could require these applicants who are gonna build this style of system, if you could require more of them. Because the law does state that if you're more restrictive than the state law, you're, you're considered non-compatible. You lose your local control and the state gets the call. These questions still haven't been answered by the state and more than likely, they'll make their way through court and get answered there. But what we're kind of working with our clients on is we don't think it's unreasonable to designate, so long as the, the zoning area that you're offering up is, is reasonable considering the size and the space that these facilities will need, we think that it's better to plan for a zoning regulation, you know, picking areas within your community where these things would go as opposed to assuming that the state said you couldn't. Because if the state decides that you can't, it's easier to repeal, it's easier to make a map amendment change by saying, well, we'll just get rid of the overlay than it is to all of a sudden have to write in and go through the exercise of where are you gonna put these things? Um, so you're, the current ordinance in front of you is state compliant. The other thing that we're working with the communities is, the question comes up, well, what if I have a 40 megawatt solar facility? It's 50 or above for the state rules. What about less than? The state hasn't offered any guidance on that. So we've all interpreted that as it's local control as usual. Write it how you want it, do what you're gonna do, as long as it's reasonable, it works. So the ordinance that you have in front of you speaks to two schedules. It speaks to a Schedule A, which relates to your state-sized facilities, and Schedule B, which is everything else below those nameplates. Um, and so those ones come with a little bit more restriction and a little bit more rules because there's nothing in the state law that says you can't. Um, and honestly, I would say that you guys are in kind of a unique position with the ORC choosing that the overlay or the area in which these facilities could go, um, is the same as the gravel overlay. Um, it's actually a, a, a unique position to be in because it is a substantial geography in the community and it puts those landowners who kind of have these sites where sometimes they, to the naked eye, they're clear for 10 or 15 years while they're digging. Um, so you've actually found yourself in kind of a unique situation where you kind of already set up for a unique use in a unique area and you're just kind of adding to that. Um, with that, like I said, I know Megan put together a good presentation. The memo that we provided, I helped out with a lot and I think is very helpful in understanding. The memo that we provided, I helped out with a lot, and I think is very helpful in understanding. This is just really a chance for you guys to review it. We would probably look to do the public hearing in July, to get it to the township in August, because the one timeline that we're working against is, in November of this year, if you do not have a CREEO, that's what they're calling them, a compatible renewable energy ordinance, if you do not have a CREEO by the end of November of this year, you are automatically deemed non-compliant, which basically means a developer or an applicant could come in, say, you're not compliant. I'm going to take this to the state, and the state's going to decide where it goes within your community. So with all that, if that wasn't enough or too much, I'm happy to answer questions. Again, this is kind of a review, there's no vote required this evening, but I'm happy to kind of educate how I can.
Questions on this? I know the ORC is going to work on it.
The ORC, with input from Megan, decided to bring it to the planning division. This is for the folks that haven't had a chance to work with this, like the ORC, because it's hard to grasp what's happening. So we thought we'd get it to the entire planning division, still not allow them to have the ample time to review it prior to the July meeting. So there was some thought given to that. There's a lot of work in this.
It is, it is, and it's kind of a best foot forward at this point, because it's going to be unproven water come November of this year. And everybody's, that's not news to anyone. You guys aren't at any more risk than the next guy about, well, how is this all going to get tested in court, and so on and so forth. But to John's point, yeah, I mean, it's a heavy lift. It's one that we've been working on, and I mean, I've been following this for a year. And I've done a lot of work with other communities on it as well. So again, just to kind of back John's point, like, kind of putting it in front of you as a preamble to the public hearing that we'll have in July.
We have it to the point where the attorney is looking at it now. Our original plan had been to bring it to the 27th June meeting for a public hearing. But based on current information, we will not have a oral on that night.
Correct.
So we can't do anything with it. So that's why July 11th is now the day that we bring it in, have the public hearing. But this gives you a preview of what our thoughts are, so that you can look at it. And if we, when we have our meeting on the 27th, if you have any comments against it, we can certainly talk about it at that point.
And I would say, so referencing the 27th, which likely, which may not happen.
Right.
I would say that, you know, again, it's a heavy lift. So if you're looking at it between now and then, you know, reach out to Megan or I with questions. You know, again, not from the perspective of, just from the perspective of going into the public hearing feeling more comfortable about what you're reading and how to understand it. Like I said, it can be, it's intimidating at first, and this is coming from like someone who followed it. But again, we've been working on it long enough to where I think the memo does a really good job of walking you through the steps. And like I said, you've got Schedule A and Schedule B. Schedule A is for the state stuff, and it's copy pasted. B is for the smaller stuff, and that's where, you know, again, we've put into play what we feel are the appropriate studies to ask for, the appropriate setbacks to use, the appropriate height, bulk, placement regulations, landscaping, so on and so forth. You know, again, the bigger question's going to come down as if these state systems really take off, and how communities choose to work with them from the perspective of additional requirements. There's, I mean, the law is set up to where the MPSC gets a year to review these things. Townships, municipalities, and villages get three months. Now, that doesn't seem fair, and in some ways it won't be, because for the first couple of review of these, you know, we're going to be in unproven waters. However, there is a thought process that the developer wants to work with the community. The developer doesn't want to sit around for a year, waiting for the state to say yes or no. They want to get their answer in 90 days, so they can get their permits, and they can get their stuff on site, do what they need to do. So there is some thought process that there'll be some negotiation, there'll be some work back and forth. But again, not to, I'm sorry.
On top of this, there are some groups that are going to take this to court and try to fight it. So at some point in time, this whole thing, it's got the subject changed.
Yeah, and I'll end it with that observation. That is going to happen, although I know that the most popular and well-known effort to get it on the ballot failed. And so that does mean that come November, it will be law. So just with that in mind, like I said, we're getting everybody to that finish line, and then it'll probably be up to the courts from there on the big stuff. So I'm happy to answer any of the questions. Like I said, I would, in prep for the public hearing, I think the memo does a great job. Read through it. If you have questions, reach out to Megan and I. You know, we can walk you through it as best we can.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay, moving on to number 12, communication or committee reports. The Economic Development Committee. Don't think anybody's here. Ordinance Review Committee.
We have a listing, we don't have a copy of it for you tonight, but it shows various projects that we've been asked to look at, and the status of where we are in the ORC. There are two pages. Next month, we should be able to supply you with a copy of it, so you can see what's going on and feel comfortable with the work that's going on there. And then it'll also be available for John to take to the Township Board, so they know what we're working on.
Okay. Thank you. Number 13, Planning Engineer Reports. You guys have anything else that you want to?
From a planning perspective, just that we continue to work with Enclaves Phase 3 to get them in front of you guys for preliminary site plan. They probably will be at the first July meeting.
Okay. Anything from Sharp Engineering tonight, other than what was in your packets?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, it looks like that's everything. Unless there's anything else that you would like to discuss, I'll motion for adjournment.
Where should we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.